This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting, February 4th, 2025. The meeting is available by go-to meetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
So I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the January 28th meeting. And claims.
There are claims?
No claims. Sorry. I made a mistake.
Make a motion to the 28th meeting.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
I am second. Any further discussion? Roll call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney, Matt, Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Motion passes. County attorney discussion.
I have to leave about a quarter till nine because I have the Zoom meeting that's going to take about all day.
Okay.
Which is not my preference. But anyway, the one thing I would tell you is I know there's an extension of a moratorium resolution. I drafted that. It's just in line to be dictated. Some things I typed myself, but if the formatting I don't understand, I'll have Becky do it. This is one of those things. So she'll get to that and I'll get that sent out, okay?
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming in today. Sheriff is not here today. Department head discussion.
I don't know. We're gonna talk soon enough anyway, but I looked into copiers like we talked about last week. I went around to see. There's nothing really viable for what you guys are looking for. What I'm gonna suggest is to lease a copier. I talked to Hannah. She has a pretty good copier. It costs her $90 a month. That way, there's full maintenance on it and that also includes toner. And for that cost, I mean, we could go five years as opposed to paying the $5,000 for an older device that has questionable support. So if you guys would like, I can get a quote from who provides our copiers on what I think would be a good fit for you. But I estimate, let's just say a hundred bucks a month.
So...
To lease a copier.
With knowing that, was it come out of your budget? Because I know our budget is pretty tight.
It can. Yeah. I mean, that amount of money, I don't have a problem with. It saves me a ton of hassle and grief too when the copiers are supporting it, so. Could definitely do that.
Get some quotes?
Yep. I'll get some quotes together.
I don't think we need one like as much as what Dogger Treasure Dogger does. I mean, they produce massive ones.
Yeah. I'm hoping it'll be less. That was just kind of a starting point where it's like, oh, that amount of money. Yeah, probably the best way to go. So I'll be back for phones, but I wanted to go over that quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department head? I don't see anything online. All right.
I've got nothing for you this morning. I have my conference the rest of this week, so. If anything, just text or call. You know?
How'd the speech go last week?
That's this week.
Oh, that's this week. Oh, we're geared up.
Well, I'll let you know though, our test sections on our concrete in 105, a lot of research done. Yesterday, we had a meeting on the results of the individual that did a lot of research, got his PhD by doing the research on that. So a lot of stuff we're still learning, but really interesting.
Did they cord or what did they do?
No, just our test section, all joints and...
Oh, that, okay.
That one there. So they've been studying that for a while since it was new. They've been comparing that one to South of St. Amster, paving the two 105 sections in Worth County and then one in Buchanan County and one in... Mitchell, Worth County are four of the six test sections. Learned a lot. Very good.
All right. Thank you. All right, to number seven, discussion and possible action on upgrading phone system.
I'm back. So last week, one of the, one of the people are going to be doing a demo with Ghosted Me. I still haven't been able to get back with that individual for that quote. What, fortunately, Mark came up with a contact talking about a WebEx phone system. That person, Tammy is her name, the account manager for them, comes back from vacation today. So I'm gonna talk to her about getting the quote. But yeah, I can't, I can't get back ahold of that other person and I'm kind of nervous to do business with them anyway if this isn't the type of support we're gonna get. So luckily, we got a good, good recommendation from Mark and going forward, I'm, that's what I'm gonna focus on instead of the other vendor.
So you want to table this for two weeks?
If we could table it. Two weeks, that would be great, I think. So you gotta schedule the meeting and everything just seems to take forever.
All right, we'll table it for two weeks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have we found workarounds for other phone issues?
Yes. Fortunately, we were able to find someone who can help support our phone systems. It was about three layers deep of vendors because I always change companies. So luckily, Public Health got me ahold of that and we got something a bit more solid, for sure. So I was very excited to find someone that could help like that. Definitely thanks to Jess and Laura to help me find that person.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Review and discuss possible setback ordinance. I'm gonna let you talk.
Okay. All right. Well, last week, I asked that this be put on the agenda. I feel that Mitchell County needs to address some not only safety issues regarding pipelines within our county, but this isn't just necessarily a safety issue for those people on the west side of the county. I realize that that's probably the biggest area of concern right now because that's where the newest pipeline is projected to go through. But this is more of not only a safety issue, but an environmental issue and a liability issue for boring through intersections and damage that's done to the environment around those areas. Compaction and having to backfill. We don't want, as a county, to have to bear the burden of those costs after their projects are done. So I feel like we need to put in place some ordinances not to only protect those people on the west side whose the pipeline might be scheduled to come next to your home or next to your livestock. But, but we also need to protect the county as a whole financially from the burden of any company coming through and damaging, boring through roads, bridges, around culverts, cricks, that kind of thing. And so we need to be alert. Several counties have, have gone ahead and put ordinances in place. I also feel we need to use our proper process in that we need to address this with our planning and zoning. And so Rachel will, or not Rachel, Sidney will share a little more on that as the pro temp for our planning and zoning right now. But several of the counties have used the same lawyer and I visited, we visited with Aaron about the possibility of researching something that way so that if we have an ordinance that's similar, and maybe Aaron can speak to that a little bit, the reason for, for doing that.
I can. Like I said, I'll stick around as long as I can and then I'll have to...
Yep. That's why I wanted to get you in there quick.
And I'm not trying to bug out of here, but things come up. But what I had said is kind of what I said before, of course, you know, I don't make policy. I always say that because it's you guys' job. To give legal advice, I have my own personal opinions about things, but I try to give sound legal advice. If, I think if the county were to try to adopt like a pipeline ordinance, it seems to me that it would be best. I, I haven't researched what all of the other county ordinances are, but it seems to me that the best option, if that's the way the county wants to go, I think county ordinances should be mostly similar, right? I mean, they can't be identical. I get it. No county is exactly like the other. But it seems to me that if you have a bunch of haphazard, I mean, if Bremer County has this ordinance, Worth County has this ordinance, Mitchell County has this ordinance, Sarabia County has this ordinance, it seems to me that it's awful easy for each one of those to just be smacked down, right? Because I gotta be honest with you. This is more my personal opinion. I think this thing's gonna go the pipeline's way when it's all said and done in the courts, the way it's going now. Not saying I prefer it that way, but that's kind of what it seems like the trajectory is. And I might be wrong. I can't speak for judges, but that's kind of what it seems. So if you have a bunch of these different ordinances, it's pretty easy for somebody to just smack it down, right? Oh, Mitchell County's complaining, smack. Worth County's complaining, smack. You know, you just smack all these individual ordinances down. It's like swatting flies. But if there's a more unified type of approach.
Right.
Where a lot of counties have very similar types of ordinances. It would seem to me that it gets a lot harder to just dismiss it, right?
Right.
Now, I don't know. Maybe, I might be completely wrong, right? I mean, this, this, I don't know how any of this is gonna go. Anything I'm talking about now may not go that way at all and I might be completely wrong. I don't know. But it just seems to me that if the county wants to go, wants to talk about doing an ordinance, try to have, I think the county ordinances are probably better to be somewhat similar.
Yep.
I think you also need, this is not me trying to get out of work because I like my job very much. But if there's gonna be crafting of an ordinance, probably gonna wanna work. You're gonna want to either work with an attorney or have an ordinance based on that an attorney who is skilled at drafting legislation, which is what an ordinance is.
That's already done, also.
And I mean, I'm, I'm not me trying to get out of anything. It's not me trying to have the county incur money for anything. I'm happy to assist how I can, but when it comes to drafting these things, there's a skill to it, you know? And it's its own thing. And, you know, ordinances are, they're always looked at, are they too narrow? Or are they too broad? And those are things, if you have an attorney that's kind of used to drafting those things, can work with.
Make the process go more smoothly and...
I do. I have, I think there is, I've heard, I've not talked to this attorney yet. I'll see what you guys, what direction you guys go. I don't want to get presumptuous about anything, but I've heard there's an attorney in Des Moines that, that is involved in some of the drafting of these ordinances.
Right.
Not talked with him yet. Again, I'm not trying to say which way anybody ought to go. It's just that if... Anyway, I think that kind of answers what you're asking.
Yeah. So, and, you know, certainly we have visited with Aaron upfront because that's also part of our, our process, of course. I'll just rattle off a few of these counties. Adair, Worth, Casoot, Lynn, Pala Alto, Shelby, Story, Wright, Ocajontas, Bremer, Dickerson, Emmett. And so many of those, or several of those have used, you know, the same attorney to draft that. So as Aaron was referring to, some continuity in the process, perhaps not recreating the wheel for the general parts of an ordinance might be really helpful. And so, so from that standpoint, Sidney.
So being stand-in for Amanda while she's out on leave, I contacted the commission board to see if they want to have a meeting. I have a very small window because a lot of them are taking winter vacations. I did get a day, which is February 20th, at six o'clock here at the courthouse. We will bring forward ordinances to them and they will make a decision if they want to continue. That's what the board is for, is if they want to continue. And we will have Aaron involved and we'll have to make a decision if we want that, the attorney involved. So if the commission wants to go forward with an ordinance, we will have to work on that. It's not gonna be a done deal anytime soon. There will be no public comments that night because I want the commission to be able to look through all the, everything. They're gonna have multiple ordinances in front of them, so. And I don't know what I'm doing, so please be patient with me because it's not my regular board, so.
I just want to interject that Sidney's comment there is not true at all. She jumped to her pro temp position rather quickly last week and, and I, as a supervisor and a citizen of Mitchell County, appreciate that. I, I think that for the, for the protection of all, we, we need to move forward and step forward. Keep in mind, that's my opinion and I'm one supervisor. And in visiting with Aaron, he did share that, you know, he certainly would be open to visiting with whatever lawyer is, is doing a vast majority of these agreements and that perhaps that could streamline the process a little bit as well, but...
Yep. And then also, if they choose to go forward with an ordinance and work on it, the super, it comes back to us and then we essentially...
We have that, right.
What's gonna happen with it.
I want to speak to what Aaron said a little bit. I think that's part of the problem is the consistency with ordinances and Aaron is gone.
He's, yeah.
So the, the whole, whole thing has to do with property rights for people. What people want to do with their property. I'm all for that. And when you start having setback distances, it's good for, for people that do not want the pipeline, but it is not any good for people that do want to have this happen because it all of a sudden creates setback distances for, to limit what they can do with their own property. The whole thing about this problem is eminent domain. That's the core of this whole problem. If you get rid of eminent domain with this, you get rid of the whole problem because an individual who wants it signs the, signs the agreement, pipeline's on their property. The person that doesn't want it, no, keep it off of my property. I don't want it. There's no eminent domain for that individual. Problem is gone for that person. The, there's people in the legislature that realize this and there's, and there's legislation being proposed again this year to try to solve this problem. And they're not going to buy all these setback distances, different distances that different counties are doing. They're not, they're not focusing on that. They're focusing on the eminent domain part of it. Get rid of that, the problem is gone. That's my thought on the whole thing. So it does not, does not mean that I've changed my opinion on things because the code is read specifically that, yes, the board supervisors or the people are supposed to take care of this county, but if you read that code, that first paragraph says right there that the General Assembly, which is the legislature, has made the law that says that the Iowa Utilities Commission will take, basically take care of the people in regards to safety, issuing the permits, whatever. So people keep coming to us wanting us to do something, but hopefully, they voted accordingly in the last election for the legislature people that want to take care of this problem because they are the ones that wrote the code.
With all due respect, Jim, I, I hear your comment about eminent domain. I guess I would respectfully disagree that if you took eminent domain off the table, this would all go away. I believe there are other entities that are wanting to propose pipelines or lines through our county and I think this will become increasingly an issue. I'm not only speaking to that aspect of it, the safety of it, but I'm also speaking to if you have workers at an intersection and there's a pipeline buried and there's an accident where they have breached the pipeline, where's, where's our liability protection? So some of these ordinances are going to protect all of the citizens. It isn't necessarily just focused on a setback situation. They're addressing the financial burden of, of repair, filling roadways, intersections, thoroughfares, and making sure that people working in those areas in the future are safe. You know, correct. Your, your comment that similar to maybe many of the windmill situations many years ago, if I don't want it, I just don't sign it, you know? And the, the challenge is people that are around number nine, when it goes through number nine, if you happen to be the individual driving down the road and something happens, where is our county's protection for that kind of a thing? It isn't just a one-faceted situation. In other words, I'm thinking of the county as a whole. I realize that many people on, on this side of the county, maybe, are, are less focused on the effects of the land, the rivers, you know, those kinds of environmental things because it's maybe not right in their backyard. But I'm looking at the financial security and stability of the county as a whole. Not just an eminent, we can't affect the eminent domain this moment at this situation, but we can go the step to protect our people and protect our finances moving forward for road maintenance, intersection maintenance, looking at the amount of dollars that are spent. When the project is done, I would prefer that the county not be the one to bear that financial burden of rebuilding roads or intersections, whatever the case may be.
And I would say point taken on the majority of what you said. Just because my district is not in the west side of the county does not mean I don't care about the west side of the county.
Oh, no.
I work for the whole county and I've always worked for the whole county, so.
I, I appreciate that.
That does not mean that I can give a hoot about the west side of the county.
I appreciate that.
All right.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move on.
So they're gonna do an ordinance on it or not?
I don't know. It's up to the commission. I know partake in that. I'm just running the meeting for Amanda. So if they want to do an ordinance, then they'll figure it out.
What was the date again? February 20th?
Yep. All right. Number nine, approve Mitchell County proced- procedurement policy resolution number 1259-25. So there's three of these items that we'll talk about here. The first one is the procurement policy. So the big takeaway is the rules are located in the two CFR, chapter one, part 200, titled the Uniform Administrationative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for Federal Boards, also known as the Uniform Guided. These three items could not be found in Mitchell County and you technically need this, this specific one in order to spend federal dollars. So we are able to, I believe we have this fact dated here. Elizabeth helped pull it out. Yep. So it goes back to July 1st, 2024, this fiscal year. All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1259-25?
I move to approve procurement policy for Mitchell County resolution 1259-25 going into effect July 1st of 2024.
I made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Roll call Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim. Motion passes. All right. Approve Mitchell County entangable, tangible, sorry, asset policy, resolution number 1260-25. So this is a Gatsby 51 report. Again, could not be found. But it's in regards to having intangible asset policy. And they just need to be able to see this to see what we're following. So we have been basically following what this policy is, but they can't, they don't have a written copy to go off of. All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1260-25?
I'll make a motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution 1261-25, Mitchell County Financial Reporting Policy. So last one. So it's the Gatsby 34. We did, we have been following what was in our audit report book for previous, for what's considered capital assets and what number they get filed under. She did, Elizabeth did recommend upping the assets that would be 10,000 and above versus 5,000. And then I did verify with Rich and the infrastructure years. Otherwise, that was the only update. All right. Is there a motion to approve resolution 1261-25?
So moved.
I made a motion. Is there a second?
I seconded.
I am second. Any further discussion? Roll call Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark. Motion passes. Number 12, discussion with Prairie Ridge on program two, Good for Drugs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have some information. If I pass it out to you guys.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I have some extra things too, if you would like it. This is not enough. So I am Emily Balashev. I'm a prevention specialist at Prairie Ridge. I'm also part of the Mitchell County Substance Use Coalition. So I am here to discuss hopefully using some of the opioid settlement money to help fund the training for Too Good for Drugs. And so Too Good for Drugs is an evidence-based program by the Mendez Foundation. And it focuses on youth third through 10th grade, or through high school. And so we meet with all the kids in that grade. It's a universal program, which at the moment we don't have, so this would be something where we could reach every kid. So what we do is we meet with them 10 times, so once a week for 10 weeks. We go in, we take over a class period and we follow the curriculum that's given to us. So the first five sessions focus on some of those social emotional skills, refusing peer pressure, managing emotions, how to have proper communication. And the last five sessions focus on specific substances, so alcohol, nicotine, opioids, and prescription medication. Every time we meet, there's like a lesson that we do. There's, it's really interactive. So the kids have a workbook that they follow. They do games and activities and kind of get the information in a more like acceptable way to them. They're learning, but they're also having fun. And so what we are planning to do is have a training because right now, we only have one person that is trained to facilitate Too Good for Drugs. So we've paired with some of the other coalitions in our eight county service area. And on that second page, it kind of gives a breakdown of the cost of everything. The biggest cost was the curriculum. So that is our book that we follow provides all the visuals, all of the activities, and then workbooks. So that was paid for by the Cause Coalition and that was around $6,000. So they purchased us two sets of curriculum for... So they purchased us two sets of curriculum for grades three through high school. The Worth County Coalition paid for the actual training, so we'll have somebody come to Mason City, and it's a one-day training on February 27th, and that was $2,000 plus the cost of travel, which was $1,250. And then we are hoping that the Mitchell County Substance Abuse Coalition would help with the venue that we're gonna have it at. We're hoping to have it at Prairie Ridge, but there's a lot of breakout activities, so we don't really have a space available for that, so we'll be having it at a location in Mason City. It is an all-day training, so lunch catering, and then some travel expenses. So that was estimated around $750 that would come from the opioid funds. Once we are trained in it, we're able to facilitate it. Right now, we have this program in three of our eight counties, and it's been really successful. We've been in fourth and sixth grade classrooms and have seen a lot of positive conversations and just, it's overall been very positive and one of the better programs that we've seen for prevention. And our hope is that come our next fiscal year, so July 2025, one of Prairie Ridge grant would be able to cover this program. So there would be no additional funds. It would come from other sources to be able to actually go in the schools and provide it. Do you guys have any questions at all? In other words, I think that's all I have. On the paper also lists some of the program objectives that are nice to know and just an overall summary, some of the things that's targeting, working at.
Could this be for all the schools in Mitchell County?
Yeah, so we could do St. Ansgar, Osage, and Riceville, whoever would like us to come in. So I mainly worked with the St. Ansgar schools, and right now we have a small group that happens there, but they've expressed interest in having something in their elementary, but we just don't have anything available. So this would allow us to do it there, and they've had some funding that they want to use for things, but we just don't have anything to offer. And true prevention happens between third and fourth grade, where you can meet the kids at a young age and really influence them from the young age, not when they're in high school. So yeah, this would allow us to be able to do that in any of the schools that are wanting to have it. Thank you. Yeah.
I just want to interject that I was at the Substance Abuse Coalition meeting last week and appreciated some of the snapshot views of portions of that training and the fact that they have confirmed that we do have an increased issue, and so I think it's a good idea to address it head-on, and it's good that it's coming out of those opioid funds. That's always nice to have something that has a little funding on the side.
I do also have, if you guys want to have one for yourselves, but the exhibit one, so it talks about everything that can be paid for by the opioid funds. So there's actually three sections that this could fall under, but if you'd like one of these, I can hand them to you as well.
Can I have one of those?
Yeah.
Do that, email me, whatever.
Yeah, I can pass one out. It's kind of lengthy, but there's a lot of different things that can provide. One is providing funding for staff training or networking programs and services to improve the capability of government, community, and not-for-profit entities. And then it can also do funding evidence-based prevention programs, which Too Good for Drugs is one of those.
Is that something that you do have a PDF that you can just send to supervisors?
Yeah.
Because I just access it on my computer anyway, so that'd be great.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Emily? All right.
Thanks for what you do.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming in today. Okay, moving on to number 13, discussion on Valant.
Yeah, just wanted the board to kind of be aware of what's going on. So Valant produces a product, and we've had the sanitarium has been signing those documents for years in regards to proving that it's made in Osage, and some of it talks to being certified, and that was the problem with the Board of Health had a problem where Amanda really shouldn't be signing something to certify a product, and I understand that. So there's been a number of emails between Valant in town plus their corporate offices in Illinois between myself and them to try to get this resolved. If you, I don't know if you have all those documents, if you printed that stuff or not, but there's a document that's called, it is titled, "The United States Environmental Protection Agency." And there's a letter that starts with, and then after that, the second part of that, turn on page three, is, let's see where I'm at, I might not be able to pronounce that product name, but it's Vecto Back 12 AS. See that? So that's an EPA certification that basically says that that is the product that they're making here, and the EPA has approved that, and it is to be made here. Valant is hoping that possibly if they just provide that document when Amanda is out there to sign it, that, no, she's not certifying the product, but she can just basically say that, look in a bill of laden that they have in regards to something they're gonna send out or whatever, and she doesn't go out there every week to check this, this is just randomly, that she can just verify that, yeah, you're making, I'll try to say that again, you're making Vecto Back 12 AS in Osage, and she's not certifying it. We don't need to have a decision on this, but I just want the board to kind of be informed as far as what's going on, because, like I said, there's been emails in regards to this with you and them since November, so.
So my first question was, shouldn't this be something that your QC people are already signing off on, I would assume through their manufacturing process? And are they providing that as backup as well, or?
No, that's been.
From a county liability standpoint, I can understand why the environmental health side of it is, has come up.
I don't know if you printed the email string that I did. Okay, and then one of those, I speak to that in regards to, she's not qualified to do that, and Valant basically should be certifying your own product. I mean, that's, we're not chemists, we're not engineers, that's your end of it. So, agreed, yes, they need to be doing that, but I think the main thing is that the EPA or some regulatory body somewhere is saying, no, we need to know that you're making this product in Osage, and this is the product that you're making in Osage. I think that's the basis of it, so. And this isn't done, but we'll see how it keeps going here, but.
Right.
Just wanted everybody to know what's going on.
Done a lot of back and forth on this.
Done a lot, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you for letting us know.
Okay.
All right, meeting's attended.
I had nothing.
I have one this week.
I have one this week as well, and as I referenced earlier, I had the substance abuse board last Tuesday afternoon, and they discussed the use of opioid funds for some of these training programs, and did a little bit of a snippet of an example of some of them, and I very much appreciated that. They actually showed one of the trainings that they had implemented at St. Ansgar, where they have a bedroom, and parents could come in and see if they could find the drugs, and it was a little bit of a test just in watching it on the screen, so I think that's a very valuable, a very valuable program. So appreciated that. That's all I, other than touching base with Erin Murphy on some of the issues regarding the orphans, that's all I have.
All right, a county social service meeting, lady came to talk about this 43 North Iowa, we gotta take kids that are in social service, and they get finding jobs, and they follow up on them, and it sounds like a pretty good program they have.
I also attended that. I called it community collaboration, but yeah, it was very good. We have a lot of things around our community for mental health, kids and stuff, so that's all I have.
Clerk of Court Report for December, so noted, they had $1,668.92. Manure Management. Myersite, 3104 Mitchell Line Street Orchard Island, Cooper Cattle, 1980, 410th Street, Osage, Cooper Hogsite 2 LLC, 2069 Highway 218, Osage, and McIntyre Finisher Farm, 4752 Windsor Avenue, St. Seville. Thank you. Public comments.
Well, thank you, Pam, for doing all the research you did, and I guess I would like to speak to one thing about ordinances and similarity in ordinances, and I think it's terribly important that there be similar ordinances in all those counties, and it isn't a matter of just simply eminent domain. Everybody in this county should be concerned, because water, you see, is just another big thing, environmental impact. The other thing is, and there is no unlimited water supply, they are drawing from the deepest aquifers even, and they're only recharged through rain. Now, the other thing is that the IUV Board or Commission now, they are not elected, they are appointed, and they're three members, and they pretty well do whatever they decide to do. So I guess I wanted to say that when the rupture happened in Sartor, Mississippi, the Federal Safety Board got so many comments that they decided that they had to change their safety rules. That's been what, three years ago, four years ago? They haven't promulgated the rules yet. They have not have been approved. So I think it's very important when we look at the rupturing of pipelines, it's, you know, anything that's a public thing. So I would certainly think that when you're looking at ordinances, that you look at dealing with the other counties, and thank you for doing all that research and doing very similar ordinances, because again, it's not just about eminent domain. And yes, I mean, I see what you're saying, Jim, but, you know, the IUV can just, yeah, okay, we're gonna do it. And I think that all the citizens whose land is affected, it's not just them, but when I looked at some of the areas, and I've been up in that part of the county, and I thought, oh my God, it's terrible. It really is. So having those people go through those lands, their creeks, destroy a natural environment. But anyway, the environmental aspect is very, very important. And I was on the board, and we had a pipeline go through, and I was very concerned about the road crossings and so on. So thank you, Pam, and I do think that you should all look at combining with other counties and doing similar ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a comment too. Mine was unrelated to the roads, which is interesting that you brought that up. A lot of the counties have been doing road crossing ordinances, and I looked back at the Mitchell County website, and the last ordinance I found related to the roads was to the metal wheels. So it was back in, there were a couple of Mitchell County ones. Ordinance 11, storing, handling, transporting hazardous materials, that was in 93. The land use objective plan did not have a date. Zoning established 1998, and then Mitchell County Ordinance is 35, 36, 37, 44, 46A, four updates, and then again, that was related to the steel wheels, and that was 9412 was the last time, so I couldn't find an update. And then this other part was the Iowa code, that the supervisors really have the responsibility for the crossings of your roads and the pouring. So just, I printed this out, but I can send it to you, I can email to you if you want.
That would be great. Thank you, I appreciate that. Appreciate your.
And Drake County and Breona County were two that were brought up at our last legal meeting, that they have road crossing ordinances.
All right.
I have a comment.
Who's speaking?
Lisa. Good morning. My name is Lisa Ritzert. I'm a Mitchell County landowner. First, I wanted to clarify that local governments have land use authorities around pipelines. Local governments can regulate development near pipelines with their land use authority. They can negotiate terms of easement. Local governments too can enact regulations governing the types of structures that can be built near pipelines, establish setbacks, or a variety of other land use permit requirements. That being said, I've been before this board on multiple occasions asking for the Board of Supervisors to put aside the notion of for or against in order to move forward and enact proactive measures of community planning for new industries, such as a poised first-in-kind and scale CO2 pipeline, as well as others that may be coming down the pipe. From setback ordinances to survey and road crossing ordinances to drainage resolutions and fee structures, various land use development plans and actions should be considered to balance the welfare and interests of community stakeholders with the interests of incoming industries. The Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration has published a Pipeline Land Use Planning Guide called the PIPA Report. I've provided the PIPA Report to this board on multiple occasions over the last year. Besides speaking before and providing multitudes of written information to this board, I, as well as others in this community, have contacted state and federal legislators, the governor, president, and federal and state regulatory agencies. We've read, researched, written letters, attended meetings and webinars, made phone calls, and communicated with other individuals and organizations on this issue, many hours and days. The Iowa State Association of County Supervisors states this: "A county supervisor's duty is to protect and preserve the rights, privileges, and property of the county or of its residents, and to preserve and improve the peace, safety, health, welfare, comfort, and convenience of its residents. We are asking the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, who were elected by and are paid to represent the people of this county, to please use that authority vested as local government officials to put beneficial ordinances in place to protect the costs, welfare, and interests of the residents of this county. Other counties have done so." I'd like to thank you on that, and I'd also like to acknowledge that Summit Carbon Solutions Representatives Kaylee Langrell and Kylie Lang were in on the meeting today.
Thank you. All right. Can I adjourn the meeting at 9:00?
I just want to make an announcement. There is a bipartisan women's group in Mitchell County, again, I found replacement for Mary Dine. We will be hosting a legislative forum on February 22nd in St. Ansgar in the Fellowship Hall of the United Methodist Church there. That was the only place we could find. It will be at 9:00 in the morning, and Jane Bloomingdale and Doug Camp will be there, so it's a chance for people to contact and have conversation with their representatives. There will also be one on March 29th in Osage, above the fire station on Main Street in the movie hall there.
All right, thank you. Can I adjourn the meeting at 9:19?